Good evening, everyone. Today's date is January 2nd, 2025. This is a reorganization meeting of the Robbinsville Public School District. We're at the Pond Road Middle School Cafeteria and time is 18:07. Please silence all mobile devices during the meeting and there is to be no smoking on school We call this meeting to order. The New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the rights of the public to have advanced notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with provisions of this act, the Robbinsville Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted in the Trenton Times on December 27th, 2023, and the Township of Robbinsville bulletin board no less than forty-eight hours in advance of the meeting. This notice was also posted at the Sharon Elementary School, Pond Road Middle School, and Robbinsville High School. In accordance with NJSA 18A, Culling 12, Tac 24.1, and Policy 0142, the Robbinsville Board of Education shall be bound by the provisions of the School Ethics Act. Everyone, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have the announcement of the unofficial election results. At this moment, I'd like to do the oath of office. This is for all new board members, Dr. Gould, and returning board members, Mr. Howard and Ms. Lehman. If you can please stand up. We're gonna go in front of the turn and repeat and bring your oath, and I'll read it to you all, and we'll swear under it. We're affirm.
and the Constitution of the State of the Earth. And that I am a fair and equal citizen of the United States of America and this state of the United States. I am a faithful citizen of the people of the United States of America and this state of the United States. I solemnly swear that I present the qualification for drive by law, as an office of members, with order of education, and that I am not disqualified, and with order pursuant to RS 1941, RS 1942, nor disqualified, with conviction of crime, for offense of the NJSA, the CTA, 1612. And that I am faithful, impartial, and just as a form, all the duties of the office, to comply with the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of the Earth. And that I am a fair and equal citizen of the United States of America and this state of the United States. I am a faithful citizen of the people of the United States of America and this state of the United States. I solemnly swear that I present the qualification for drive by law, as an office of members, with order of education, and that I am not disqualified, and with order pursuant to RS 1941, RS 1942, nor disqualified, with conviction of crime, for offense of the NJSA, the CTA, 1612. And that I am a fair and equal citizen of the United States of America and this state of the United States. I solemnly swear that I present the qualification for drive by law, as an office of members, with order of education, and that I am not disqualified, and with order pursuant to RS 1941, RS 1942, nor disqualified, with conviction of crime, for offense of the NJSA, the CTA, 1612. And that I am a fair and equal citizen of the United States of America and this state of the United States. I solemnly swear that I present the qualification for drive by law, as an office of members, with order of education, and that I am not disqualified, and with order pursuant to RS 1941, RS 1942, nor disqualified, with conviction of crime, for offense of the NJSA, the CTA, 1612. And that I am a fair and equal citizen of the United States of America and this state of the United States. I solemnly swear that I present the qualification for drive by law, as an office of members, with order of education, and that I am not disqualified, and with order pursuant to RS 1941, RS 1942, nor disqualified, with conviction of crime, for offense of the NJSA, the CTA, 1612. And that I am a fair and equal citizen of the United States of America and this state of the United States. I solemnly swear that I present the qualification for drive by law, as an office of members, with order of education, and that I am not disqualified, and with order pursuant to RS 1941, RS 1942, nor disqualified, with conviction of crime, for offense of the NJSA, the CTA, 1612. And that I am a fair and equal citizen of the United States of America and this state of the United States. I solemnly swear that I present the qualification for drive by law, as an office of members, with order of education, and that I am not disqualified, and with order pursuant to RS 1941, RS 1942, nor disqualified, with conviction of crime, for offense of the NJSA, the CTA, 1612. And that I am a fair and equal citizen of the United States of America and this state of the United States. I solemnly swear that I present the qualification for drive by law, as an office of members, with order of education, and that I am not disqualified, and with order pursuant to RS 1941, RS 1942, nor disqualified, with conviction of crime, for offense of the NJSA, the CTA, 1612. And that I am a fair and equal citizen of the United States of America and this state of the United States. I solemnly swear that I present the qualification for drive by law, as an office of members, with order of education, and that I am not disqualified, and with order pursuant to RS 1941, RS 1942, nor disqualified, with conviction of crime, for offense of the NJSA, the CTA, 1612. And that I am a fair and equal citizen of the United States of America and this state of the United States. I solemnly swear that I present the qualification for drive by law, as an office of members, with order of education, and that I am not disqualified, and with order pursuant to RS 1941, RS 1942, nor disqualified, with conviction of crime, for offense of the NJSA, the CTA, 1612. And that I am a fair and equal citizen of the United States of America and this state of the United States. I solemnly swear that I present the qualification for drive by law, as an office of members, with order of education, and that I am not disqualified, and with order pursuant to RS 1941, RS 1942, nor disqualified, with conviction of crime, for offense of the NJSA, the CTA, 1612. And that I am a fair and equal citizen of the United States of America and this state of the United States. I solemnly swear that I present the qualification for drive by law, as an office of members, with order of education, and that I am not disqualified, and with order pursuant to RS 1941, RS 1942, nor disqualified, with conviction of crime, for offense of the NJSA, the CTA, 1612.
All right. As a reminder, if you can sign the oath of office, where it says signature of board member to the bottom right. After the meeting, we'll be collecting these. Ms. Victoria Delagrati will collect them. We also have tonight the confidentiality agreement as well as the Code of Ethics signed by every board member. So we'll be collecting all those documents afterwards. At this moment, I'd like to go on to a roll call. Ms. Bandukta?
Here.
Dr. Gould?
Here.
Ms. Hild Angelo?
Present.
Mr. Howard?
Present.
Ms. Lehman?
Here.
Mr. Nandan?
Here.
Mr. Olberg?
Here.
Dr. Piero?
Here.
Mr. Ray?
Here.
Dr. Pizzo?
Here.
Myself, Mr. McCree, the president. Dr. Wazniewski?
Here.
And legal counsel is absent for tonight. We're gonna read the Code of Ethics. We have a motion on this item. So moved.
Second.
Okay, before we take roll call, I'd like to have these read out. We're gonna go around the horn. Ms. Hild Angelo will be the first. She'll be taking A and we'll go around. And I want every board member to read one of these items and then we'll circle back. And by law, we have to read these, we need to read these out.
I will uphold and enforce all laws, rules, and regulations of the State Board of Education and court orders pertaining to schools. Desired changes shall be brought about only through legal and ethical procedures.
I will make decisions in terms of educational welfare of children and will seek to develop and maintain public schools that meet the individual needs of all children regardless of their ability, race, creed, sex, or social standing.
I will confine my board actions to policymaking, planning, and appraisal. I will help to frame policies and plans only after the board has consulted those who will be affected by them.
I will carry out my responsibility, not to administer the schools, but together with my fellow board members, to see that they are well-run.
I will recognize that authority rests with the Board of Education. It will make no personal promises nor take any private action that may compromise the board.
I will refuse to surrender my independent judgment to special interests or partisan political groups or to use the schools for personal gain or for the gain of friends.
I will hold confidential all matters pertaining to the schools, which if disclosed would needlessly injure individuals or the schools. In all other matters, I will provide accurate information and in concert with my fellow board members, interpret to the staff the aspirations of the community for its school.
I will vote to appoint the best qualified personnel available after consideration of the recommendation of the chief administrative officer.
I will support and protect school personnel and proper performance of their duties.
I will refer all complaints to the chief administrative officer and will act on the complaints at public meetings only after failure of an administrative solution.
Yeah, that too. I'll take a roll call at this present moment. Ms. Bandukta?
Roll call, like, present? Again?
Yes.
Yes.
Dr. Gould?
Yes.
Ms. Hild Angelo?
Present.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Ms. Lehman?
Present.
No, no, this is just a yes or no.
Yes.
You're accepting that you've read it, understand it, signing off on the ethics?
Yes, I have.
Mr. Nandan?
Yes.
Mr. Olberg?
Yes.
Dr. Piero?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes. At this present moment, we're gonna move on to the reorganization of the Board of Education. Are there any nominations for the board president?
I nominate Peter Olberg.
Second.
So nominations, not just one, one is it? There's no second on any nominations? All right, now I have Mr. Olberg nominated by Dr. Piero. Are there any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Mr. Olberg, do you accept the nomination?
Yes.
Motion to elect Peter Olberg to serve as president of the Robbinsville Board of Education effective on this date, January 2nd, 2025, until the next reorganization meeting of the board. May I have a motion?
Move.
Second.
Who was first? I'm sorry.
Right, Gould was first.
I will take a roll call. Ms. Bandukta?
Yes.
Dr. Gould?
Yes.
Ms. Hild Angelo?
Yes.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Ms. Lehman?
Yes.
Mr. Nandan?
Yes.
Mr. Olberg?
Yes.
Dr. Piero?
Yes.
Mr. Anthony?
Yes.
Mr. Anthony Ray. Sorry. Congratulations. I transfer over. At this moment, the board president now takes over the meetings and for the remainder of the year. His first order will be electing a vice president.
Is there a nomination for vice president of the Board of Education?
I'd like to nominate Dr. Jeffrey Piero for the vice president.
Second.
Is there another nomination for the vice president of the Robbinsville Board of Education? Are there any additional nominations for the vice president of the Robbinsville Board of Education? All right. Can I have a motion to approve Dr. Piero as the vice president of the Board of Education of Robbinsville?
Motion.
Second.
Mr. McCree, roll call.
Yes.
Dr. Gould?
Yes.
Ms. Hild Angelo?
Yes.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Ms. Lehman?
Yes.
Mr. Nandan?
Yes.
Mr. Olberg?
Yes.
Dr. Piero?
Yes.
And Mr. Ray?
Yes.
May be resolved that the Board of Education appoints Dr. Jeffrey Piero to serve as the vice president of the Robbinsville Board of Education effective on this day, January 2nd, 2025. All right. Establishment of the 2025 Board Committees and Appointments. So historically, there was a need to have several ad hoc committees. So those ad hoc committees were Technology, Security, and Special Education. Based on where we are today, we feel that it would be good to consolidate those committees into the larger committees. So Special Education would go back into ed policy. Security and Technology would probably go back into business, or they would be, you know, actually integrated into all the committees, right? We would talk about all those pieces that are germane to each one of those committees to make it more efficient. If anyone disagrees, we can have that discussion now, but we feel that it would be good to do that. If there's a need to form those special ad hoc committees again, we could always bring those back out. But the idea was thinking that we had seven committees and it would be good to just have them always ingrained into the way we do business. So, you know, I think we can have that as discussion now, if there's any concern about doing that.
Sorry, could you just repeat the committees being consolidated?
So the ad hoc ones would become parts of the other four that are the standing committees every month. So Special Education, you know, likely more be in the ed policy kind of range, but again, everything should be touched on since they have a piece in all the committees.
Technology under business, am I assuming?
Probably under business. Yeah, but then there's...
But you can't also, I'm sorry to interrupt, you also can't ignore for ed policy and for, you know, the role that technology has played in that role too.
Correct.
So technology is interweaved between all, you know, aspects of the committees. And I think really same thing with security, because part of security, of course, would be on their business for allocating funding, but also policy that we do for mental health and for safety in school, that all kind of gets filtered there. So I think those aspects of each of those ad hocks do get talked about at each committee.
Jeff? I'm sorry, Peter?
Yep.
Will you still have somebody running this ad hoc special ed department or the group?
We were thinking that that would just be, all the ad hocks would be consolidated into the other groups. If we feel that we want to keep one, we could always keep one. Again, it was open for discussion this evening, so it wasn't like we were just doing this. It's not like that. It's more, you know, a discussion for efficiency.
No, I understand that. Are you still going to have one person, one point person for that particular group so that there's somebody that is going to be able to have members communicate with that board member?
So we could still have that, yeah? That would make sense.
I'm on Tanya's question line here. I don't know the history of how special ed ad hoc was created, but I feel like it was an ask. Georgine, tell me if I'm wrong. It was an ask from the CPAG that this be created, so I just want to know.
Again, it was, so Amanda, this was more of a, you know, again, to try to get efficiency. If the board decides that ad hoc special education remains, then it remains. I was just asking from an efficiency perspective, because, you know, the Technology Committee did not meet for two or three months. So, and I think that that was a little bit of a shortcoming. We should be talking about those things a little more regularly in our regular committees to begin with, so it'd be good to have those there. Special education, I would agree with you. I think that, to me, is the only one that really stands out, to have its own ad hoc. So I'm in favor of keeping it, if that's with the board, you know.
Yeah, no, thank you, Pete. I think ad hoc technology and ad hoc security makes sense to be rolled to the business. I would keep the ad hoc special education separate, you know, because I think that certainly needs a little bit of more attention, given its prominence...
Sure.
...across the community. Other than that, I think the rest of them remains. I think the only consolidation that I would agree for is ad hoc technology and security to be brought into business.
Okay. And then, again, all those security and technology we discussed in the other committees as well, that are germane to them.
Makes sense, yeah.
So...
How frequently is the ad hoc special education committee meeting separately?
Typically, the ad hocks are every six weeks.
We totally meet every month.
Oh, okay. So I'm saying, in general, the ad hocks are every six weeks, but if they're meeting more, then they can meet more.
What I would say is that, just from a special ed perspective, I actually think having special ed under ed policy and bringing Georgine into our curriculum development meetings is really well-rounded. I think that if we could pull Georgine into those conversations, which I don't know what that looks like, but if we could pull Georgine into the conversation, I think it could be more robust, because we're going to look at data from a holistic perspective in that case. I just didn't know the history of why it was founded and what its founding was asked for by parents, and so I was just asking from that perspective in case I'm missing something.
Sure. Nick, I don't know if you have any more history on the ad hocks?
So I don't know how long the ad hoc special ed was. I think it's been before my time, and I've been here four and a half years. Security as well. Ad hocks, you typically try to address an issue. You stand them up and then you stand them down, as opposed to a standing committee that's always meeting. Security, you know, we came here, there was issues, concerns, and there's always security issues. You can always improve upon things. It ramped up, and then, you know, it comes, that changed a bit. Technology was created a few years ago. Actually, it was Mr. Gallotti proposed it, and then we started getting more board members who are in tech. It was in dire need of support. We fixed an incredible amount of tech issues, and now we're presenting across the state of what all the things we've done, and now we're more preeminent, definitely not where we were years ago. That was always part of the business committee. So, you know, going back makes sense, and now we'll talk about it more often as opposed to every six to eight weeks. And the same thing with safety and security. It was more of a district-level concern, and so that, but for the special ed, I'm not sure how long that was. Now, you can keep it, you can adjust it. If you don't need it, you can always dissolve it in the future. You can create a liaison, appoint a board member to be a liaison to CPAG, or you can have a committee of two, three, or four people on it, right? And once again, it's, you're the board members, if you really have a passion for it, I'm not gonna call people out, it's just if this is something of interest and you want to help out and do something, you can have those meetings. But once again, you're asking the administration to help out and fit those in our timelines as well.
Any idea what the security meetings will look like if they're not ad hoc?
I think we just, we roll them into the other committees, right? So I would say that the business committee would have, you know, a section of that be the security meeting, or something like that. You know, again, this is just a efficiency kind of thing for us. You know, there's seven committees, I know a lot of us work, so it's kind of hard to get there in the morning or during the day to be there. So I was trying to see if there was a way to, you know, make it more efficient for us to attend in person more often as well. I know sometimes it's just not tenable, but it's just a way to get it to be more efficient for the administration, more efficient for the working board members, that we're all working. I think in the past as well, Nick, a lot of the ad hocks were also for retirees and stuff. It was easier to attend more committees.
So there was discussion now about moving business committee away from during the day, which we typically had on Friday noons, you know, move it more at night, because, you know, we, previous boards were, you know, people who had more flexible schedules. You know, many of you are working in education, you have to pull you out of school, you have to remote in. If we can change that time, it's been a request, and we can do that. Getting two or three committees done in one night is very efficient, and we can roll those in, but we have so many committees that to do that would be very long. And then we looked at it, well, some committees are quick, you know, we're trying to find stuff to put in to make it worth your time, and then if it's every six to eight weeks, then things fall off. So in the business committee, I will make it a standing item, security and tech, and I'll incorporate that in there. There may not be an update, but it's always there. You know, I mean, there was an acronym before I came here, the Business Committee was F, F, T squared and then cubed, to is finance, facilities, tech, transportation. I mean, they kept on expanding the acronym, and I just, at one point, I said, let's just rename it to the Business Committee or Business Operations, and that's how that name changed. So we'll be adding that. It's not going to disappear. This is something we do all the time anyway. It's just, is it at the level for you to take action? And typically, as well, for committees, it's really for the administration to bring items to the board. Hey, we have certain issues and concerns, and we need your funding or your support or a policy change, right? But realistically, it also happens the other way around. The board tells us, we have some issues from the community that we were elected upon, that we have concerns and want to raise it as well. So if there's something that you want to raise, you can raise it in those committees that makes sense. But, you know, it used to be that if it was a tech issue, okay, now we got a tech committee, and then, well, it's ed tech, so let's go to ed policy, and then we have to go to the Business Committee to fund it. And so it was jumping so many committees that, you know, it served its purpose at that time, because we really needed a lot of help in tech. And I speak about tech because, you know, I was a part of that and creating that, we did it with Mr. Gallotti's, and then we added more board members to it. At one point, it was just two board members, and then it grew and grew, and we got the support that we needed. And now it's time to, well, does it need that much support? Can we pull it back into Business Committee? So that's why, and then we asked the same question about safety, and then it was like, well, what about all the ad hocks, right? So, and the same thing goes for the ad hoc negotiations, right? That does not meet always. It doesn't, it's not really standing. It's only when it's needed. So it's, we can play this out how it is, but there was a trend. We kept on adding more and more committees, and it's, well, let's pull it back and reorganize it and rethink it, and why were we doing this? Oh, because it's always been done that way. Okay, so now it's, we're asking the question, and so it's here on the table right now for your discussion. This is not set in stone. It could always change. You're the board. It's one of the privies of the board president. He can assign committee members, change them up, and add, create ad hocks, and back and forth, so.
Yeah, and to your point, Arthur, I would, I would envision in security, being the same thing, we invite the principals to come, the safety resource officers to come, the police force to come, and to be part of that small portion of that meeting. They generally last twenty or thirty minutes anyway, but, and they will only meet every six to eight weeks. So this way, we at least have an update more regularly and to hear what's going on. But again, it's open, just to use that one as the example. I don't know if that answered your question.
Yeah, I mean, I have no problem with trying to consolidate the committees. I was just wondering how would that security still look? Like, we don't have ad hoc security in HomeDell, but I run that committee. I just meet with, it's not a board committee. It's just a committee I meet with the chief of police and the special threes and the SRO. So I just was curious as to what that would look like still. So, but you answered my question, so I'm good.
Okay. Yeah, I think, you know, the ad hocks would stay the same. They would just be incorporated into each of the larger committees and how they pertain to those committees.
Yeah, I think depending on the topics, we could also kind of separate out for a meeting if that's available. For example, if there are too many items or agenda items on the security that we need to discuss, but there is also a lot on the business, because we're consolidating, we don't want to rush through some of those topics. And if there is a way, that flexibility, that we could actually have another meeting just for a security perspective, I think we should have that particular ability to do that. And if we do that, then I think consolidation should be fine. The one other point that I want to also make is, given that we have nine board members and we probably consolidate into six, from an inclusion perspective, it would be good if we can have chair and a vice chair, so that, you know, there is equal engagement across all these particular committees, so that, you know, if one person cannot make it the other vice chair of that particular committee can actually take charge. So that way, we all are engaged across all committees, which would actually help to disseminate information and collaboration.
Makes sense. Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to add kind of the support for consolidation, I think, from an operational efficiency perspective and just making sure that all of us are feeling like we are having our voices heard and not feeling like there are some silos across. Doing a consolidation makes sense. And to his, to Regu's point, doing a subcommittee within the committee. So if there is a special ed or a strong need for a special ed, it would be the subcommittee of ed policy. And that, that's how the agenda would reflect. So in that vein, and making it a standing topic, like an agenda topic, as was described as the former finance agenda look like. It makes complete sense to me, so I support it.
Anyone have issue with it? So I think we're all in favor of consolidating, let's say, tech and security to start. I think let's, let's work on, let's, let's see what we do with special ed, the special ed committee.
I very much support special ed being under ed policy.
Okay.
I think that Georgine will bring a perspective to the general education process. Because when we're doing ed policy and we're doing curriculum, special ed needs to be involved in everything. And she's going to have a great perspective. And while I can advocate as much as I can, and Steve has watched me carry on as much as I can about tier two and tier three supports. We need, uh, Georgine's brain in there as well. And I think it'd be great.
So why don't we change that ad hoc to liaisons as Nick suggested? And then we can have two board members be liaisons.
I thought Nick's idea was a good one about a liaison with CPAG and, um, yeah, go on that route.
Yeah. So the idea is I think most of the committees will stay the same. I think it's with, with Jay being and, and Dr. Gould now being on the board, things have shuffled a little bit. But I think for the most part, the committees will stay the same. So, um, I'll share, we can share those. Nick, do we have to say them right now? Do I have to go through them now? Okay. Let me pull that up.
You want to make a, uh, you want to add to the list liaison, uh, special ed liaison or liaison to CPAG? How would you like to make that?
Yeah, let's, let's.
I just ask, I don't, hold on. I don't know if CPAG has that in their bylaws to accept a liaison. So I would just ask for the like.
Can we say community liaison? It should be like a part of community relations?
So CPAG is like a separate entity and they are the controllers of their meetings. And we can't put upon any bylaws onto CPAG. We can't say you, you have this liaison anymore. I think we have to review their bylaws before we do that.
Just a clarification though, could you, could, is it against their bylaws to be a representative to another board? Just for presence and perspective to offer?
Go ahead, Nick. I'm, the liaison is just, I'm your, your talking point to the board. You communicate through me, not, I'm sitting on CPAG and making a decision.
Right.
And a board member, that's a different story.
Yeah. As a liaison, you would not be imposing on, you know, any kind of rules or anything else like that. You'd be a communicator, what was happening at that meeting to the rest of the board.
Yeah. I would see them communicating to the liaison, who's the point person for the board.
It would be, it would just be like when we're doing the, um, the county liaison, right? We don't run any county meetings. We kind of, they give us the agenda, we sit and we listen to the, and then we report back to the board during liaison reports. This was what was talked about at the county meetings. That would be the same kind of.
If I can interject again, this is exactly like the Robbinsville Township liaison. We would go to their meetings, you'd report and same with the township. They have their liaison to us, you know, they don't sit on our board, but they report back and forth. And you have a conduit to have discussions with each other. It just formally appoints somebody, hey, you're it, you're going to the meetings. Please come back and tell us if there are any issues or concerns and vice versa. It gives that person more authority as opposed to, I'm just a board member. No, I'm the board member on behalf of the Board of Education.
Does that have to be decided like tonight?
No.
Because I, I would suggest talking to the group first because they may feel that, you know, that this is being forced upon them.
Oh, I, and my suggestion was not that it was to CPAG. It was to the community. It's a community liaison. So if, if anyone has specific questions about special education, we go to the liaisons on the boards, like community relations, right? If you have any community outreach, as you go to that committee and ask them anything, right? So I wasn't just focused on CPAG by itself. It would be a broader thing to what Nick was going for, like, you know, the township liaisons liaise with the town and the community. But we don't have to decide it tonight. We could always, we could always go from there. So how about, I, I don't want to take it off though. I really don't, I want to keep it there, Nick. And I think, I think the same board members would be on that ad hoc, in my opinion, if the board agrees.
So do you want to, do you want to, um, appoint them tonight? Or you just want to defer and appoint in a future date if you want?
All right. How, how about this? We, we, let's, let's try to determine that before the next board meeting and we'll do it at the actual board meeting for the month.
None of these have to be decided tonight. It's best practice to decide as many as you can. So then we can probably schedule and post it and, and set up timelines and so forth. We have done it before where, you know, it took a few days, you know, okay, who wants it? And you call everybody. There wasn't, you know, much turnover on the board, so we're keeping a lot of things the same. So it's a lot easier to do that. But there's been history of other boards in ours as well where there were some changes. And it was like, okay, let me figure out who wants to be at what committee and this and that. And that took a few days. So it does not have to be decided tonight. But I think you have most of the decisions made already, uh, based on what the history and the precedence is. If there's something that you really want, you should be talking to the board president, I really want this position or not. And, and caucus on that.
Okay. So we'll go, we'll go through the committees real quick. All right. So I'll just go, I have, I have my list here, Nick. So I'm going to go through, I have, um, for business, I was going to make the chair, Dr. Piero. I could be the co-chair of that one with him. So again, Mr. Nandan recommended there's a backup for the chair.
Is that vice chair or co-chair?
You say vice chair. Yeah.
Okay.
Then I'd have on there, Mr. Nandan and Mr. Howard.
I'm sorry.
So, uh, so Mr. Gallati is off of the business and finance committee and I've added you to it. Community relations, I think for the most part that has stayed the same with Mr. Nandan as the chair. I would have Mr. Ray be the vice chair. And then I'd have Ms. Bandukta and Ms. D'Angelo. For ed development and policy, I would, Ms. Lehman would still be the chair. I'd have, uh, Mr. Howard as the vice chair. I'd have Dr. Gould and Ms. D'Angelo on there. Personnel, I'd ask that, uh, Ms. Bandukta be the chair. Going to add, uh, Ms. Lehman to take Mr. Gallati's spot and have her be the vice chair. And then Dr. Gould and Mr. Ray. And then negotiations, I'm going to have Ms. Bandukta be the chair.
It's two committees.
It doesn't meet as often.
Sounds like a lot of work. My mic's still on, I'm just kidding. Okay.
Are you okay with that? Again, negotiations, did, do we even meet last year for negotiations?
We have a couple of items. There are negotiations is ad hoc this year. You're, it's, there's, it's not negotiation season. It will start at the end of this year with some very small things. So we might probably meet just once, twice at most. It's actually starting for the year of, of next year where it really kicks in. And then you'll only be doing sidebar agreements. And so we'll usually like email you, hey, this sidebar, take a look at it. We don't really have a big meetings because the sidebars are typically short and sweet. And we take care of those with the attorney and everything's kind of wrapped up. If there's an issue, then you would have a meeting, but those are very quick. It's really only when negotiations kick off.
Sounds good.
Okay. I would be the vice chair. I have Dr. Gould and Mr. Ray on there.
Who's the vice?
Me. Myself. For liaison, township liaison, it'd be Dr. Piero, myself, I'd be the chair.
Sorry, are you missing a member for negotiations? Or is it meant to be two?
Four.
Sorry.
I had yourself, myself, Dr. Gould and Mr. Ray.
Nice.
So for township liaison again was myself as chair with Dr. Piero. New Jersey school boards, Dr. Piero and Ms. D'Angelo. We can have two more. Does anyone else want to be part of the liaison? There's, there's no reason to keep it to two?
I volunteer.
Okay. Is there, is there anything that you have to do to get on those or you just?
So basically the only thing you have to do is go on the website, you kind of sign up for the meetings.
I'll, I'll sign you up, I'll sign the people up for whoever's on the committee, it's primaries and alternates. But as you said, when, whenever there's a meeting, you just sign yourself. I think you just sign yourself up for the meetings and go.
Yeah. There's always a virtual and a in-person option. So I've done virtual, yeah. I think if you go in person, you get a dinner. Depending on how hungry you are that night, you am.
If it's a good dinner, you can sign me up.
It's a good. All right. So we'll have, we'll add Anthony to that. So Dr. Piero will be the, the chair.
Dr. Piero, Ms. D'Angelo.
Mr. Ray.
And Mr. Ray. Okay.
Yep. Then we have Mercer County School Boards as a repeat.
Okay.
And legislative liaisons as a repeat of township liaison. So it'll be myself and Dr. Piero.
Okay.
Did I miss anything, Nick?
Ad hoc, special ed, you'll make a decision later? In the legislation or?
How about we keep it for now, the same as last year? And then we can fine tune it for, by the next board meeting. So that way, if there's anything that needs to change, we can change it then.
All right. Who was it last year? I don't have.
It was, uh, the chair was Ms. D'Angelo and Ms. Lehman was on there as well.
Yeah. I don't, I don't think we're really doing anything different other than absorbing it into ed policy. We're just calling it a different name.
Yeah. We were going to figure out if it's going to be like a liaison, you know, what, what we're going to do with it as like a liaison. So there's a special ed liaison. And then I would have you both, if you're still willing to be the liaison, if, if that's possible to be that. So, um, I think it's worth keeping it as its own light item.
Definitely.
Any comment? Oh, hang on. I switched screens, Nick. Okay. Okay. Public comment, uh, time will be allocated for public comment at this meeting. Members of the public, uh, willing to address the Board of Education on agenda items must state their name, municipality and the group. If any, they represent. A member of the public shall not be permitted to speak until he or she is recognized by present, the presiding officer. In accordance with the district policy, each committee or each comment shall be limited to three minutes. No participant, no participate, may speak more than once. No dialogue between a speaker and the board and or superintendent shall exceed the three minute, uh, time limit provided herein. Live streaming of the, of the meetings shall be for viewing only. The public will not have the ability to participate in the public comments unless they are physically present at the meeting. Although the board encourages public comment, the presiding officer can interrupt, warn and or terminate a participant's statement, question or inquiry when it is too lengthy and may also interrupt and warn a participant when the statement, question or inquiry is abusive, obscene and or defamatory. Moreover, the presiding officer can request any person to leave the meeting with that person, uh, when that person does not observe reasonable decorum. In adherence to the protocol established by the New Jersey School Board Association, the board will use the public comment period as an opportunity to listen to resident concerns, but not to debate issues or to enter into a question and answer session. Issues raised by members of the public may require review and investigation and may, and may or may not be, uh, responded to by the board or superintendent during the meeting. All comments will be considered and a response will be forthcoming if and when appropriate. Can I have a motion to open public comment for 30 minutes?
So moved.
Second. All in favor? Any nays or abstentions? Okay. Public comment is open for agenda items.
Lonnie Jacob, Robbinsville. Since it came up in your discussion with the committees, um, I just wanted to share some insight around the history of the ad hoc special education committee. Since many of you mentioned that you weren't here when, when those items came up. That I was a part of the original CPAG group. The need for the ad hoc CPAG committee came up around September 2020. It was officially made a school board ad hoc committee in January of 2021. The reason being for that was the, um, special education parents in our district. This is again during the height of the pandemic for COVID, when we were still looking at children not in classes on a five days a week, full-time schedule. So you had concerns with students that require physical therapy, occupational therapy, speech therapy that didn't have access to, uh, those therapies and were regressing. You had students, um, that were suffering from behavioral issues and parents were concerned about having a consistent spec, um, consistent education for their children and following their IEPs. So out of that pandemic and some of the concerns from parents, um, and, uh, the, uh, just inconsistencies that was happening across the country at that time, not only in our, our school district. The idea was that the, the school board would have a dedicated committee that would have high visibility into students with special education needs. And ensuring, uh, that those needs were being fulfilled during that time. So that was the intent behind that original ad hoc, uh, special education committee. Under state law, you still have the mandate that the school board of education will ensure that a CPAG exists. Once that CPAG exists, um, it is up to the parents of that group to govern, um, that organization. But the intent behind that was at the time, there were some, uh, resources that were missing like a BCBA, additional child study team members, consistent classroom time, um, consistent therapies that, uh, the school board of education in collaboration with the CPAG at that time, felt it was necessary to have that high visibility in our students that were, um, experiencing the most vulnerable issues during that time. So that's just a, a little bit of the history, just so everybody is aware. Thank you.
Nushin Kanani, Robbinsville. Congratulations all who just got in again. And, um, I hope it's going to be a great year for all of us. One of the, one of the most important issue for me is the security. I brought it up on the last meeting and I don't know how you guys are going to put it in what category and in which group with everything that is happening and it's constantly happening. I don't want us to think that we are in a bubble and we are not seriously thinking about it. So please make sure that you guys have your meetings, have ideas of what if, what ifs happen and have ideas of how to make the, um, situation not getting to the point that we should have and we could have. So that's the part that you just know that you're counting on your committee members and committees and, um, the responsibilities and how many meetings you guys have to meet and the conversation that you have to have with the SROs and the township and the securities and all that. It is very important that you guys meet. Not a few days ago, before your school started, they, they just got someone who was running around with the, with shooting. I'm sure you all read the situation. So please make that a little bit, um, your priority. I know that a lot of other stuff is priority, but this is becoming to the situation that, um, it's getting closer and closer. So I would really appreciate if you guys think about that as much as you can. Because not having a meeting months after months or not having discussion months after months is not acceptable. But, um, I just wanted to make sure that I bring it up because it was told to me that please bring it up. Because a lot of people couldn't attend tonight. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Chris Semiholtz, Robbinsville, New Jersey. Wanted to congratulate the three board members that we just sworn in. Congratulations to Barb and Arthur and Tanya. Wanted to congratulate and welcome our new superintendent, Dr. Pizzo. Good luck and good luck to all of you to have a very successful 2025. Thank you.
Happy New Year, everybody. Mike Todd, Robbinsville, H Chambers Court, also a member of the Township Council. Uh, just want to congratulate, uh, Tanya, Art and also Barbara. Congratulations on your wins and thank you for your time. And, um, also I wasn't able to be here for the last meeting, but also I just wanted to thank Mr. Gallati for his time on the board, his tenure. Based on all your comments I saw online, um, he obviously made, you know, a huge contribution to this board and thank him for his time. As you all know, it's, it's a lot of your personal time and thank you for that. And also just wanted to welcome Dr. Pizzo as well. I was joking with my friend Chris here. You know, I know you came from District New York, but the best pizza is in Robbinsville. So you're in the right spot. So thank you. Welcome. I'm sure you're just unpacking your, your boxes and your office and everything. So, uh, get to, uh, hopefully get to know you a little bit better over the couple, next couple of years and, uh, and welcome. And, um, I just wanted to also thank Pete, Jeff, Regu and also Anthony. You know, we, this past year, uh, in 2024, myself along with, I met Councilman Chopra. We tried to be very proactive and try to open up communications a lot better, uh, from the Township Council side to the Board of Ed side. And, uh, we tried to meet, uh, once a month and it was tough with our schedules. Apparently we're very, very busy people. And, uh, but we, we managed to, uh, to get together, uh, number handful of times. And, and really just kind of get to, get to understand the challenges on our side, your side and how we can best work together. So I look forward to continuing that into this year. You know, hopefully, you know, Pete will reach out to you and hopefully we can come up with somewhat, you know, decent schedule and, and makes, uh, you know, everybody's time, uh, we can get in and get out so we don't, uh, but actually, you know, it's always, it's always fun, uh, talking to you guys. And the past couple of times we met at different restaurants and it was, it was a good time. So, and we've got a lot of fruitful conversations as well. So it's very valuable. So, um, that's it. Have a great year, everybody, and thank you for your time.
Thank everyone. Any additional public comment? Can I have a motion to close public comment on agenda items?
Still moved.
Second.
All in favor? Any nays or abstentions? Approvals of appointments. Approvals of appointments, board business and business operation items. Uh Superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the following appointments, designations, board business, and business operation action items. What's that?
Motion has, motion has to be on the table and then you can discuss.
Yep. So can I get a motion?
Motion to discuss.
Yep.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Bandukta, thank you, Dr. Piero. Any, any discussion?
Yeah, one quick comment, just a question, actually, clarification question on personnel. I know um Ms. Lehman was mentioned, but just curious to know, is there any conflict of interest when it comes to personnel with teacher? I just want to make sure, okay, got it. I see shaking heads, good. And I'd be pleased to have you as, I'm gonna call you co-chair because.
I was on it, actually, I think for two years.
Yeah, I think you chaired it, did you chair it?
I don't.
Okay.
Believe I did.
All right, just trying, all right, well, I'm looking forward to it.
The issue comes with appointments if it's failing members or something, that's for all board members when you appoint somebody for a position or whatever. But uh organization, it's actually really a negotiation. So Ms. Lehman cannot be on negotiations, anybody else in that union. So if you're in administrators' union and you're negotiating with the administrators, then you can't be in that one as well.
Got it, great.
Any other comments, discussion? Not seeing any. Mr. McCree, your call. Ms. Bandukta?
Yes.
Dr. Gould? Ms. Hill D'Angelo?
Yes.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Ms. Lehman?
Yes.
Mr. Nandan?
Yes.
Mr. Alberg?
Yes.
Dr. Piero?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes unanimously. I think it's old business, is there any old business? Any new business?
Right, um just wanted to actually bring uh the community update saying that we did actually made a statement about the crematorium which was submitted to the DEP and we did get a receipt of them receiving our statement. Just wanted to let the community know and the board members know.
Yep, thank you, Mr. Nandan. I was gonna do a new business, but I, thank you, I, I, thank you. Um so, you know, we, as as Ms. Nandan said, we we released a statement to the DEP ahead of the public comment session. So we, um I signed that the end of last year. I think, you know, Dr. Pizzo and Mr. McCree, if we could look at, you know, sharing that with the community of, you know, what we shared with the DEP so they can see, you know, what we wrote in that public comment, I think is, will be beneficial for everyone to understand the the board's position. And we'll also have it available um by the end of the month at the at the next board meeting. Any other new business? So my only thing is to, again, Mr. Todd, me me too, because I couldn't, I didn't have an opening statement this this meeting. Um but, you know, I want to welcome Dr. Pizzo to his first official meeting. Welcome to the Board of Education in Robbinsville. We we look forward to having you here and and to, you know, navigating our next couple of years with you.
All right, tha- thank you very much and very happy to be here. Uh thank you for your your confidence in me, and I look forward to um to working with everyone collaboratively, collaboratively and uh, yeah, having a good future together. Thank you.
Any other new business? All right, um, oh, the next public comment, so I won't read the entire statement again, but it's the same statement as above. I have a motion to open public comment um for ten minutes uh on non-agenda items and school matters.
I'm moved.
Second.
All in favor? Any nays or abstentions? Not seeing anything. Ready, Mr. McCree? Good? Okay. Public comment is open for school matters.
Nushin Kanani, Robbinsville. Um I'm going to put um Dr. Pizzo on uh on the spot. I really would like to know what do you think about however we set up? And what do you feel about the setup? Do you think anything needs to be changed? Do you think, how do you feel about it? Because you are a newcomer and you're seeing everything that we are doing, we are setting up and we are doing, and they are going to be working really tight with you. So I really like to know your perspective and what you think. And also, thank you very much for talking about the crematorium because we really would like to know what it is. And you said that by end of this month, then information is going to come out for the public. So we are hoping that um you guys, I heard that the, I had a conversation with the mayor and he said that they had conversation with you guys and uh um the owner and then the everything. So some things are are cooking, which we don't know what it is yet, and I'm hoping that you guys are coming up with something before um before it gets out of hand, let's put it this way. So I hope uh you guys can put a li- uh light on it because um I cannot get much out of council. So thank you very much.
Any additional comment on school matters? Not seeing any. Can I have a motion to close public comment and adjourn the meeting? Can I do that, Nick?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays or abstentions? Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening. Happy New Year.